One thirty the time is with.
Awesome, okay, I'm gonna go pretty quickly because I have a relatively large ask to bring forward to you guys. Um, so as you're working your way through your packet here, important updates, we've continued on with our Frontier Counties. Working group just meeting consistently with, usually on the call is Whitman, Stevens Ferry, Adams County, Columbia County, Azkamania, and a couple others joining in off and on. We have another round table for Frontier scheduled with Lita, the lobbying group. Um, here in a week or two, and then their legislative update is coming as well, which looks like it's gonna be heavy on state economic forces telling us what we think going into the next session. Jill, there's a packet for you if you want an extra packet.
Thank you.
Um, I completed a lunchtime leadership through rural development initiatives. Kind of left me a little lacking for what the time commitment was, but you don't know until you try a program like that and it was just a lunchtime session, so that's done, but probably not something I'll reinvest in in the future. We went down to the Meet the Bigs conference or conference, what do they call that? Not really a conference, it was like a trade show slash training for businesses that were looking to get into government or larger contracts hosted by GSI. So we were down there with a booth with our two um, projects and just collecting any sort of resources and information from contractors. There was gosh, paper products, then just anyone that was willing to come work in Ponderay County that might be able to service something and we would have as a resource, I know of a stack of business cards, pretty deep of people that are interested in work. Um, and then attended the IACC conference in Wenatchee. So that's the past, um, sort of what meetings wise and conferences. In the EDAC, we have had some very interesting and robust discussions about what the EDAC looks like. Going forward, Brennan and I had a chance to go down to Port of Whitman. Um, the consensus, and I say this is like pretty comfortably after multiple conversations now from the EDAC group, is that they are a fan of less meetings just to meet, less paperwork, just to have paperwork. Um, and are interested in seeing the possibility of the model of Whitman County. So they were suggesting a trial run of a year. Ryan, you can jump in if they're by missing anything here.
Either way, I characterize it as no one seemed opposed to the idea.
Yeah.
And it seemed like they wanted more information on it, maybe some specifics. You know, which hopefully in the next month's meeting, we can kind of get some specific ideas.
Yep.
But maybe it would look like this, you know, I talked a couple, a little bit about having what that agenda would look like. Now, you know, I have some ideas, hopefully some of the other members there would have some ideas of what that agenda should look like. To me, again, Ron quoted me on this earlier is you gotta give them business owners a reason to be there. And you gotta have something they can take home when people have to be there and make their time worthwhile.
Yeah, so we went through that. So they are asking for the bylaws to be shrunk down to a one-page revisal, which doesn't include um, any officers or needing to take massive minutes through those and just sort of holds the committee organization, but strips away all of the extra stuff that is just adding more and more stuff to their plate to do. So in here, and I'll get into that more uh, a little bit, I'm trying to make sure time is kind of go fast here. That's in a suggestion of amendments to the contract that I wanted to bring to you guys. Two other things, um, we have two projects going on right now, Project Rock Shop, Project Big Tree. Um, we cannot say much about those at all, but wanted to make you aware that there are two large projects happening that we are working on. Um, and unfortunately, until there's something that I can share, that's all I can say. Uh, the port properties are moving forward, the highway approaches at we're calling it WIP to try to keep them straight. So WIP is Wolford.
Wolford Industrial Park.
And then the hotel. So it's not to be confused with the Wolford County Park project. Um, at WIP, the first of the two highway approaches is in, if you've driven past that, it's been done. And the demolition is done for the hotel site. I say hotel, we don't have an actual hotel in there, but for lack of a better word, the Newport property. Big news and great news for you as well as us, you'll find, let's get to, I have the order here. And now I can't remember which section I wanted to visit. Right after, it's right after. So a few pages back, so after your site selection request is the ADO grant writer program information. And I've attached for you, it's just a summary of our scope of work. One more, Robert. There you go, perfect. We were just notified that we were awarded a fifty-one thousand dollar grant for grant writing services. And within the scope of the project, we included county projects, so we now have the ability to assist with grant writing. Um, for the county, for the fairgrounds. Uh, there's just numerous things in here under um, that scope of work. So we are not finished out with the contract on that. We just got the official email that said we were awarded it. And um, that's a pretty good number compared to what other individual counties are getting that applied as a whole. So we're really happy that we went after that on our own. Um, and we really hope that this can be a resource for everyone to fill that sort of, we need grants. And can't quite get applications done for them. Uh, Sweet Creek Falls was listed on there. Trying to think of what else, but there's just a brief overview of the scope of work for you guys to kind of see. So as we get closer in on that, that will include the grant writers' time for preparing those grants and submitting them and the reporting of commerce and then our administering of the grants. Sounds good news.
Is this an existing grant writer that you tapped into or?
No, this is a new one.
So you, you would have you, ADO, or you would go out and find a grant writer?
To help with these other projects that are listed in the.
Right, right.
So we still have our grant writer for port projects, but then in addition.
Are you thought of hiring an employee for that or?
Um, we're getting, we just got the rough draft of the contract. And so the way it's worded, it can be taken. You know, are we doing a ten ninety-nine or are we doing a, so we, that's one of the questions, because it's not.
I could see how freelance style might really be attractive to somebody who's
Might be, but.
Capable of making it a lot more.
We want to make sure that they're putting effort into the projects that are here and not just.
Putting their time.
Yeah.
Sure.
That, I think if they're even a temporary employee, then it's something that we can control more. Pluses and minuses both ways.
You bet.
But we'll have to wait from Commerce on that. And unfortunately, they have not been quick to respond to any of our um, stuff. In fact, this got delayed. It was supposed to be a year-long program and now we're gonna be looking at six months maybe to affect the program, which may reduce the number of grants and things that we can apply to, which is frustrating. So that is there. Gave you good news, now I have some bad news. So we were notified that we did not receive the Chrissy Grant for the shop expansion for the port facility. So that was kind of our bummer. Um, that was a large federal grant, so I believe does that open us up for state funding?
Yeah, it opens us up for some different funding from the state.
Did you get a score like we did on law, fire, defense grant?
Will, and
You will?
We'll find out where we were lacking. The frustrating thing is some of the ones that were awarded were we know that we're gonna be doing the locomotive.
They got awarded locomotive conversions that will happen at the shop, but the shop didn't get the funding, so. That was the uh, that was the bad news. Um, social media training was completed with the Greater Newport Area Chamber of Commerce, which had awesome attendance, right? Frankly, it was pretty shocking to see how many people and great uh, follow-up and emails and conversations that happened there. So that was a wonderful first training to put on in conjunction with the chamber. I just think overall it went really well. And then we're working right now on beneficial ownership information, registration with Benson Training for the Chamber of Commerce's both Greater Newport and the North End Chamber. So we just scheduled the North End before I walked in.
When are you gonna do those, you know?
That one, the North End, I believe is the seventeenth at six thirty at nine at Cutter Theater.
I haven't done mine yet.
Okay, come down and make sure you have your ID with you. So we'll cover all that of uh, just a quick training on who and then if people want to bring stuff to work through it to actually get it done. Um, I just haven't had a chance to finalize that with the holidays. So that's coming up. Um, so that gets us through important updates. Do you want me to pause? Because I'm like a steam engine and it could just keep going if you need me to. Had my caffeine for the day. Uh, this is a look at the Port ADO budget revenue. You can see numbers haven't changed considerably. And all of this again is in the more formal auditors. This is just sort of my screenshot. And then the next one is our initiatives through Commerce. Super excited to note, we are one hundred percent of the way through with two out of the five benchmarks already, not even halfway through. Um, we're at forty-five percent, that's conservative. We didn't have the final list from the Chamber on attendees yet. So she's gonna get that to me. So that number may actually go up on retention and expansion. And then um, with two more VOI trainings, we'll be over fifty percent on trainings as well. And just a reminder on the export, that'll be through Department of Commerce. And I have some people on the list for that already. Okay, site selection request. Here is a new site selection that came in. Take note that the numbers that you see are for one line and they are looking to scale to four to five lines, which includes a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space. Four point eight megawatts up to twenty-five megawatts and one million gallons of water per day with two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of discharge per day. And then you would multiply that times four to five for the site selection. So I just promised you guys I would bring you everything. Um, if I am wrong and in fact, there is something in the county that would support that, I have two more days left, so I could submit something if I needed to, which this one's pretty simple. The initial submission is just a, an email back to them to let them know. So. And then I've attached a copy of the RCW for eighty-two, fourteen, three seventy, just because I knew it's hard when you're sitting at the table here to like look up research and find things. So I printed off a copy of this. And the reason I have a copy of this is because I'd like to propose amending the contract between the port and the county. So you have a copy of the RCW, then you have a copy of proposed amendments, and then you have a copy of the contract and a copy of your comp plan. A lot of paper, sorry. I wanted to make sure that if we had a question, you could actually find it somewhere versus trying to look something up, so. And that's why I pulled all of this. So this was the comp plan off the website. I hope that's the correct one to pull. Fingers crossed. That's where I went to find it, was the website, your guys' website. And I just pulled the economic development element. Now, the reason why I'm asking for an amendment is because we have found in working with the Department of Commerce and the county, we are restricted on our funds for only use of personnel through the county. Commerce will not reimburse for any contracted work physically done on infrastructure to develop properties that we have. That came out in the most recent billing. Because of that and knowing that the point oh nine funds, which you can see in here in the RCW, are allowable for use in public facilities serving economic development purposes and port facilities, I'm asking not for any monetary change, like no dollar amount change or anything like that, but an amendment to just allow us to use the funds for infrastructure improvements on port property. So your amendments match with the contract that I highlighted, and then they're marked here to try to make it easier to track through.
You have an opportunity to supplant, is not quite the right word, but maybe the concept is strong enough, supplant oh nine funds that have been awarded to you with Commerce dollars, if you could bill them, if you would bill them for time. But then we're both paying for personnel, the county and Commerce, where if you could bill some personnel hours to Commerce, it would free up dollars the county has already given you for
That doesn't limit the scope any further, so it's not taking away any responsibility from the port within the contract. Um, we would still be handling all of the ADO duties, the reporting, none of that is suggested as a change. It's simply to allow that the funding be used for finance, public facilities, serving economic development purposes.
Right.
Adblock by the RCW. And I tried to do my homework on this to make sure that I wasn't coming back to the table and asking you for something that couldn't be done. So I talked to Jill. Jeff and I have talked it over. I think he's on for a few more minutes. Just sort of talking about from an experienced ADO's perspective, what does this look like? What could this mean? How could this help us when we're talking about our comp plan and strategic plan and goals moving forward? And what we have found is that Commerce will pay for paper, they'll pay for the study of us to demol- demolish the building, but they won't pay for the actual building to be demolished or any work that moves it forward infrastructure-wise. Which is where we're really lacking in the county. And I think that's been sort of a public acknowledgement is that we don't have places that are developed for businesses to come into. And so we'd like to ask for that. So there's some notes. The only other thing in here um, that doesn't pertain just to the financing is because of the shift in the EDAC, making note of this, it says generally monthly, I would prefer not to play in the bounds of the gray area and just switch it to quarterly if that's what the EDAC is going to. So I made those notes in there.
Jeff, did you have any comments you'd like to offer on this?
I, well, good afternoon, everybody. Jeff Coffel, Executive Director, Tri-County Economic Development. The Jessica and I had talked about uh, about how, how, how to do this shift with the money. Um, because she asked how, how we do it in Ferry and Stevens County. And there, um, when I send my uh, annual ask into the counties, it, the letter looks just like the one I, I sent you, if you recall, where we don't actually spend uh, when we have that economic, other economic development support, we don't specify that that is salary money. Uh, so it, it's kind of a little bit more unconstrained, uh, whereas we, I do specifically outline um, that your other member support you give us is directly for uh, the affinity marketing director's uh, uh, salary. So I think uh, I, I think Commissioner Gentle kind of hit the nail on the head is that it's, it's basically freeing up uh, the money, uh, the point oh nine to be, to be used for any economic development. Uh, and then that way Commerce is more used for the personnel support, which is about how we do it as well.
So help me understand, what am I missing here? Because this point two is specific to finance port facilities. Why is that not broadened to include other county properties?
Yeah, that was good suggestion.
I, I just drafted some stuff because I wasn't sure how your amendments and things work. I've never seen a county contract amended. So these are just drafts of what I pulled from the language, but there's nothing that can't be tweaked.
Well, that's not a tweet, I mean, from our perspective.
Okay.
That, that's, I mean, this makes it really specific to the benefit of the port.
Right.
And I just, I want to understand kind of your perspective. I heard what you said.
Yeah, this, this was just a, a quick draft to show you where I had noticed in the contract, so we didn't sort of miss, you know what I mean? You amend one and forget that the second one says something, but you'll notice down in, in the one section, finance, public facilities, serving economic development purposes, that language can be placed in there however you know, Dolly or whoever's finalizing it. Yeah, I'm open to that all.
I would suggest that point two, instead of saying port facilities, it's like public facilities.
Which it meets the definition of, and that's why I put.
Means the definition of that, but it also broadens it into the fairgrounds. Anything else?
And you still have all of the point oh nine through, which is why I checked with Jill to make sure that that didn't change anything with the point oh nine.
And of course. Anything that, and I think from a legal perspective, that's the concern here. There's two allowable uses of those funds in, for our purposes, is financing personnel or public facilities. And so.
I would really want someone with a legal background to look through this and make sure. My intent with the amendments, maybe that's the best way to approach it, Robert, just so that we don't get locked in on my specific words, because again, not a lawyer here. My intent is to open this up so that we can utilize it for facilities, making sure that we don't miss in here, because there are spots where it talked through different things and it was like, well, we're, if we submit for facilities, it shouldn't then be timesheets, it would be like invoices of work that was done. So we just need to make sure that the, the contract is fine-tuned for anything like that to open it up to facilities. Um, and then it was just those quarterly and EDAC sort of um, making sure that by making changes in the EDAC, if the EDAC votes that that's the direction they want to go in December, that we don't violate the contract in any way, shape or form with that language.
Yeah, it's a green light for me, Jessica. I, you know, I mean, we're um, obviously the first thing we do when we get this contract is send it over to Dolly. So we're not gonna be signing anything she's not comfortable with. And then probably that's gonna include Jill. So if you're working hand in glove with them along the way, what you're asking for is fiscal flexibility, which is makes it efficient, effective, appreciated.
Can we um, in any way, shape or form, set a follow-up for this? Only because as soon as we're able to do this, we have to talk to Department of Commerce as well. And they're going to be much less responsive and flexible than you. So the sooner I can have a direction one way, that will help me with the rest of it. So how much time or?
It all depends on, I mean, if you get this to Dolly with a statement of intent, she'll turn it around to us. And we're not able to do anything until she's been able to.
You want us to turn this to Dolly or is this something?
I didn't want to approach her.
Okay, that's what I thought. It's.
If I can proceed that also to Dolly, she's about three years out already, maybe. Okay, she said that's fine.
Great. Get it to Crystal.
Perfect. I can do that. Um, and then you do have your.
But to be clear on this, we are, um, I, I, it sounded like it, but I don't know that you entirely weighed. We're solving for yes, if it's possible.
I, I would say yes. Right? Dolly signs off on it and Jill signs off on it, that it's an allowable
Legal.
Legal use of the funds and that that is an appropriate amendment to the contract and there's not some issues that we missed. Um, it seems like it, to me, to my layman's understanding, that it's appropriate uh, use of the funds, especially given the fact that it's really supplanting and allowing more flexibility. I don't see a good reason why we shouldn't do that.
It actually lets something get done.
Yeah.
Or Commerce, I mean,
I, I.
We can push the paper and we can send seventy-five thousand dollars to somebody outside of the state
Yeah.
and not get anything done.
I would request that it's say public facilities, because it's a problem with that use.
Jill, you got any heart proof?
I would love to thank you. So the last two things in your, last two things in your packet are the comp plan. So this is one of the hiccups that when I was reading through, again, not a lawyer, but one, one, so please, like, I'm doing my best here to understand the legal jargon, but obviously we need to follow this up. Within the RCW, it states that this needs to be whatever project it's used for, because we would then do a report back on it. Needs to be within the comp plan. And when I pulled the comp plan, that's the only other piece of the puzzle I wanted to make sure that we didn't drop the ball down the line on, was that if, if you guys are okay with giving us some flexibility, we want to make sure that your reporting goes through. You know, and everything's good, but the comp plan obviously has not been updated. Yeah, no, please, absolutely.
That's why we, um, I don't want this grant thing, why I have in there about adding it to the comp plan. Anything, so as long as, right when you say, hey, we want to use this much for this project, you didn't let me know. This, we can, we don't put it on the actual plan, we make a resolution that, that's allowed by, then we do it. It's an element of the comp plan and they do a resolution to update it.
So it's. Next time, will you sit up here, please?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure, and that's the only reason why I approached this, was I wanted to make sure that whatever we have is a faster process than I, the comp plan was apparently quite.
Yes.
Okay, I just had this like, is it a four-year and we need to get on it now, or do we have a different?
And the, and the outside looking in, I think the operational party, you know, is our comp plan, we, uh, has to be updated annually and can only be updated one time. You can't update it more times, which is, you know, so you use the zoning request. How come you're only processing zoning once a year? Well, we process those for three months because we do the comp plan every fall, or at least as a plan moving forward. We are going to update the comp plan every year in the fall. And so it is narrow in that sense. We can't do something in March, um, the, the, the answer would be that's going to be included in the comp plan this fall. Um, uh, but, but it is gonna be done every year. What? Go ahead.
But I, at the end of each year or whenever we would have a, a um, piece, Greg told me that we can do the resolution, which I've been doing the past several years, that's an element of the comp plan. Of that section.
I just printed off that because I didn't think you needed anything.
Element of the comp plan and then we do it in resolution form and I just add the projects to that. And we can do that whenever you, because those are just resolutions that you can sign whenever.
Right. So we can have that at any time.
Yes.
So what, I guess, what would it take from us then to make sure that at least WIP and the Newport properties, the ones we're working on right now for development purposes are, what do, what do you need from me?
I think it would look remarkably similar to the process of the oh nine application. It's basically the same process.
Okay. So just filling, giving you that information and then you'll have it.
We would have a specific location, a specific, an address, what it is, been through the, the EDAC process, they've signed off on it and that whole process. And then it would be added to the comp plan as an element of that.
Why would we walk through?
I don't know that you need to walk through that.
Sorry, that's why I was trying to figure out what, there's kind of two different.
I'm making this up as I'm thinking.
Okay, no, that's okay. I, I mean, I, I get that I need to submit something to you guys to put on the plan. So I just need to just know what it is that you need me to submit to you. I could even give you, I mean, are the feasibility studies enough? Like, what is it that you need or an email? I mean, I can email you too.
Oh, do you want, do you want to approve this particular project that they're asking about, or are you saying what project should be as long as it's to put economic development, uh, we can just put on there?
That, oh, like.
I'll tell you the wonderful action.
I think it's just permissive, right? Like, we are not allowed to go out for grants unless it has been included in the, which is government way of saying quit doing things spur of the moment, tell me you put some forethought into this. And so in that regard, it's a positive thing. Um, you know, to be started on the rest, but I, I think that's all it is, is you won't get a dollar if it isn't part of the, in our case, six-year transportation improvement plan or capital projects plan. It's gotta be recorded somewhere as part of a plan. So yeah, that would work, that would be perfectly.
Talked to Kelly when I first talked about it, and he showed her what also we have to report on the annual report. And so that we were considering that in the projects too. So a, as long as they were like, okay, whatever economic projects that you're going to use that point, just let her know, or we want to see them before she adds it to
Right.
to the element.
And, and am I wrong in saying it almost includes potential projects, like before potential projects? Like, if there's any chance you're gonna need movement on it in twenty twenty-five, it ought to be on the list.
So what I mean is, do you want a whole list or is it anything that's driving jobs and increase in business?
I think that it is limited only by the allowable uses of the funds, which remember is a public facility. So it is limited in that sense, which means that it's not necessarily a private facility. Okay, we're talking public facilities. Otherwise, in my mind, it's permissive. A, and we don't need to know the details as long as it means the allowable use of those funds. That's the way my mind is thinking. A, and so.
So as long as it meets the RCW
Yeah.
public facilities, which includes port facilities.
Right. Right.
As long as we're underneath of that.
Our facilities.
Yep.
And uh, you know, those facilities are accessible by the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we suddenly find that.
I was just gonna use that as an example. Fairgrounds or something, we can go that direction.
Right. That's the way my mind's thinking. I don't know if you guys are tracking with me. Yeah.
Some of these projects are so up in the air, dependent upon funding and timelines and just like different things. You hear the fairgrounds needs a new building for this, or the Sweet Creek Falls would like the trails connected, but it's like never knowing which one, we want to be able to react with what opportunities come down the pipeline. Um, so okay, as long as that's the understanding, as, as long as it's under RCW.
Having a public comment is a form of game.
It's your time, if she'd like to.
Yeah, I just can't see her behind me. I'm like, what are you?
What I'm hearing with, with the comprehensive plan is there's actually two conversations that should be had here. When the comp plan, there definitely should be all of these projects included for the comp plan update, because then funding then can become available. Because then funding then can become available. But what we're talking about is regardless if it's, if you aren't looking for additional funding. And something can be done with the current point oh nine funds, it shouldn't have to be included in that plan. You should have some high level things, but it's like two paths happening right now.
Yes, that makes sense.
I have the easy path. Rather, I can do this. It's more flexible.
Yes, and and even if within the comprehensive plan, if we have. Goals and objectives that kind of address things to have that specific project pulled out. Isn't necessarily, if you can make the justification, that it meets goals and.
Correct. So that's the the comp plan's guidance should be.
Yes, I mean, you can definitely have, you know, some pieces. I have my wastewater. Plant improvements um incorporated into that, but there's also economic development drivers. There's also park improvements that, yeah, we'd like to make these types of improvements. We're not sure where they fit. You can have generalities, but. What I'm hearing are actually two separate comprehensive.
Right. Okay, so what I'm hearing from you is it, it's uh. There's no downside to including a project in the comp plan as calling it out specifically. But that doesn't preclude spending, uh, having a quicker process for spending the old name.
Like, like, your comp plan is giving the idea of what you want to do.
Right.
With that. And then the piece that we're doing and the detail of it.
Right, right. So if I'm hearing what Jill is saying, Brian interpreted about Abby's statements. We're all on the same page?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
We're on the understanding that the contract, you guys are open as long as it's all legal and blessed by Dolly's review. And articulated in the way that she needs it to be, that we can open these funds up, not just for strictly personnel, but for public facilities. Um, and it has resonated in your guys' comp plan. Um, you do have some economic development goals that I think it would fall under still. Just if anyone is wondering currently, I don't think this is outside the scope of your current comp plan. Just had noticed that that maybe needed some.
Updating. You have packed a lot into a short period of time or against a time deadline for public sharing, but.
I have two more minutes. Okay, you have a strategic plan at the back of your packet for economic development. Um, there are eight, nine, I'm sorry, nine goals listed here. And then um I have, the port commissioners have seen this, EDAC has seen this, and I've asked for anyone with comments on this. To um give me a call, but some things can already be crossed off in it, because we are working our way through the plan as we're making it. So there is that at the very back, strategic plan for this.
The the this make sure for you today, do you have a clear path forward on the two subsequent issues that you ask for? For county progress?
Yes, I'm going to give Crystal the the information and amendment proposals for Dolly to look at. And then I'm going to make sure that Jill has any information that we would need so that we can resolve that quickly with a resolution for the projects.
Great. You think there's one minute? Do you have anything else you'd like to?
I I think that's good.